That was our last, uh, that was our last public comment. So now we'll head into our, uh, our closing remarks as the applicant will have up to another five minutes. To address any items they would like to address. You don't need to use all five, but you have it if you'd like it. Uh, we will give a warning, Jacob. Let's let them know when they have two minutes left, um. And then let's let them know when they have thirty seconds left.
Yes.
Uh, looks like Lorette.
Hi.
This off again?
Yes, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really actually let Jake take the, uh, the majority of this because the, the key issues here, I think, are to, uh, just talk a little bit about the coastal policies as it relates to this particular development. Number one, it's the coastal policies really are much, very much in favor of moving traffic concentration away from the beach. And so the off-site parking actually complements that. And it is something that oftentimes, and in fact with the SPE that was approved at the Whaler, was one of the criteria that moving things away really does help traffic congestion. We're moving away from the way that traffic is moving towards the, the beach itself. It frees up the access to the beach. The other thing is I hope that what we've been able to do is demonstrate to you that we do have these nineteen onsite parking spaces and bike spa- uh, substitution and bike corrals that we will be operating at all hours. And I just wanna reiterate that our SPE exception is only for that window of time during the weekdays before five thirty P M. And, and the restaurant is not busy then, and we do have ample parking on site. I think the same goes for the loading zone with the fact that we have, you know, a good sized, uh, parking lot to work with, allowing us to park onsite, uh, and not discretioning that area for, uh, a loading zone is really much more useful to the community and to the business, provided we do it in off-peak hours and, and things of that nature. So I, I wanna just close with that and, and simply hand this over to Jake now. Uh, and I hope that, uh, you'll give this consideration. Oh, one last thing, um, the park bike substitution is done correctly. Uh, we did that with the planning department and at the direction of the planning department following the code. So, um, that is how I'll leave it with you. Thank you. Any questions, please ask.
Thanks, Lorette.
Jake, you're next.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jake.
Commissioners, I appreciate your patience. It'll all be super brief. I just wanted to clarify. We are not proposing to build a two-story restaurant. The, the second story above the small bathroom building is just exclusively a small office for, for our restaurant. And, um, we're not trying to build out much on our lot. It's only twenty-two percent lot coverage to build those bathrooms and the walk-up service window. Um, the buildings that you saw in the presentation from the city, those tall residential buildings surrounding us, I just wanna clarify, the building directly to our south, that's actually called the Air Hotel. And it's a, at least it's run as a hotel. Behind us is the Rose Hotel, also a hotel. And then the other building that's behind us that's multifamily has been run as Airbnb the whole time that we've had waterfront. So I just wanna make that point. And, uh, and, you know, to, 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 to Marcus' point, I, I love to talk more offline about Stefan. I, I also understand that when landlords raise rents, it hurts all of us as operators. And it, actually Stefan and I did have a very good relationship. He sold me his beer and wine license, which normally sells for, they told me between five and six thousand dollars for just a beer and wine license. And I paid him two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which really shared the pain between us. Cause now that we're, you know, trying to find every penny we can, I, I really want him to, uh, to, to, to have the best transition that he could and to make it as right between us as possible. Uh, Beth, I take your point. That's why we've proposed, uh, to reduce our hours, which are now two A M. Uh, to doing last call at ten thirty on weekdays and eleven thirty on Friday and Saturday. Thank you so much for your patience and really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? I think you have a few minutes remaining, but you don't need to use them. Okay. Looks like we're good. Okay, I don't see any other callers, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, great. Um, let's, uh, let's first turn to staff. Um, Vindu, anything you wanna address based on what you heard in public comment or from the applicants, uh, that you believe would be helpful with commission?
Um, not at this time. Uh, what about you, Juliette? Did you wanna add anything?
I think we're, we're available for questions. I think the commission may have some questions for us.
Ab- absolutely. Um, okay, so let's do this. Let's, uh, head over to the commissioners now. And, uh, you know, obviously we'll take questions, uh, if you have for the applicant or, uh, if you have questions for staff, obviously, let us know. Who'd like to start us off? Commissioner Lang, you wanna start us off? I know you had, you turned up.
Commissioner Lang, I was gonna say we should let you go. You have your question up first.
I mean, so I have a list of questions, but I, maybe I'll, you know, and learn from others. I will, I can start with you guys, I guess.
Very good.
Are you sure? Okay, well, sorry then. I apologize. Um, so this is, um, hi, I'm Commissioner Lang, new to the, um, um, commission, very happy to be here. So I apologize if you've seen like longer questions. I'm just trying to get my head around projects in general.
It's all good.
I have questions. So I know this is for the applicant or for the city planner, but it says they're looking at C D P approved parking. It looks like the lot they, that's listed is on Marine Street. It's like half a mile away. It's like a ten-minute walk. So is that one of the, like, what happens if that lot, if we were to approve it and that lot goes away? Um, and like, I don't know, is the, I thought that was one of the lots they're thinking about making affordable housing as well. So I'm just, cause that's right next to Saint Joseph's Centers. I'm just confused. Like, what happens if something was approved and that valet lot goes away?
Okay, so that's one of the reasons that we're not, um, including the ten spaces in our parking calculation. Because it doesn't meet code. It's not within seven hundred fifty feet of the site. It's great that they're providing it and we don't discourage that, but we cannot include that in the parking calculations because it, it doesn't meet the code.
Good, good. Thank, thank you, Vindu. Okay, Commissioner Lang, uh, do you have another question?
Yeah, I have a list, sorry. Um, and then, um, the question about, um, the, the loading zones, I, I, there's some discussion about that. But I was wondering how wide it, I don't think anyone knows, how wide is the speedway? Like, could, it looks like Google Maps, like a car could get, I mean, I know, I understand the plan is that loading would happen during off-hours and it'd be in the parking lot. But if a car were behind their wall cars or, you know, in tandem spaces, like, is a vehicle able to get by on that speedway?
Um, so speed, speedway is a one-way alley and it only has a width of twenty feet in total.
Which is, so it's, is it, so is it, but an alley counts, like twenty feet counts as an alley. Those are usually two ways, correct?
Um, maybe I can jump in here. This is Julietta with city planning. Um, the, there is a special interpretation for the Speedway alley and a lot of the courts in, um, courts as in street, the, the streets, the, the alleys behind the, the street courts. Um, Venice has a lot of courts and, and places and, and, um, right-ofways that are less than twenty, uh, that are twenty feet or less than width. And so building and safety has interpreted those to be alleys.
Right, you have, you can have two-way alleys in the city of L A that are twenty feet. So, it, so it is, it's still twenty feet, which while it's one-way theoretically, two cars, a car could get by if necessary, just.
Well, I mean, going the same direction. So you mean?
Yes.
Behind it, yes.
Or sorry, around it, yes. Okay.
Yeah, so not the, not coming from the opposite because it is a one-way directional alley, yes. But it can, depending on how.
O- okay, hold on one second, folks. Let's, um, so let's have everybody identify themselves before they speak because it's being recorded. I know that I never do, but it's always because, uh, I'm the only male on the commission. So it's pretty obvious when I'm speaking. Um, although I, I don't know why Commissioner Margulies is shaking her head. It's pretty obvious who it is speaking when I'm speaking.
Commissioner President, that's a pretty statement you just made there, and I really hope you will rescind that on the public record and follow our protocol and practices of announcing ourselves. This is Commissioner Margulies making the comments by the way.
So there, there is nothing sexist about it whatsoever. It's pretty blatantly obvious when I'm speaking as opposed to any other commissioner on this, um, on, uh, this commission. Having said all that.
And that.
Normally, hold on, hold on a second, Commissioner Lang. Having said all that, it's normally not that big of an issue anyhow, but when we start talking over each other, it creates a problem. So let's just make sure we're not talking over each other so that we can hear who we are. And, uh, it is more effective to identify yourself on the record, okay? All right. So having said that, Commissioner Lang, I think the floor is still yours.
Um, so then, I, and I may have missed it in the staff report, so I apologize. Um, but for the applicant, how would you ensure the public, I just, I, I wasn't clear why there's a description about providing additional restrooms. Is, is there not restrooms to begin with? And how will you ensure that if this was, so your parts of your application were granted, that the public would be able to use those restrooms?
This is, maybe.
Yeah, hi, uh, this is, this is, yep, uh, um, thank you for that question, Commissioner Lang. Um, the restaurants, I'm sorry, the restaurants in that part of the Venice area are, are few and far between that are public rest, restrooms. So, you know, the need for it, generally speaking, is, is quite high, in any event. And so what the decision was, was to put these ten restrooms in because it, and make them free to the public. So it is a free public restroom. Um, the ability to, you know, advertise that or make that known is something that we can do with signage. Um, but, you know, that's kind of the whole spirit of it, is that it's not just for the restaurant. The addition clearly is, it, you know, doesn't warrant ten restrooms. Neither does the entire project. It's not required. This is really something that the owner, the proprietor, realized that, hey, we need more around here. And I'm gonna use my time and energy and money to make sure that that is provided. Not just for patrons, because you don't need that many for the project that is being proposed or the existing restaurant. But because in general, it's a, a good thing to do. It's the right thing to do. And that is, that is how it would go forward.
Also, Commissioner, this has been the, um, canon with city planning. And just to clarify, the bathrooms are accessible from Oceanfront Walk to the public. They don't have to necessarily go inside the existing restaurant.
Okay, thank you. This is Commissioner Lang. Um, would, I, I didn't see if he like, that would be a con, if it was approved it, I may have missed it, but I don't think I saw anything that says that it's conditioned that they have to be open to the public. Is that in part of the conditions? Did, did I miss that?
No. This is Lorette Healy speaking. If I may, uh, it is in our application as part of what we are offering to condition.
Okay, but it's not necessarily in the staff report. I think that would be conditioned as, as a condition of approval. Okay, and then, sorry.
I couldn't, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Lang again, sorry.
Can I interrupt for just one? This is Julietta with city planning. I think it'd be helpful if, um, you could direct your questions to either staff or to the applicant. That way we're not jumping in at different times here.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Juliette. And, and yeah, obviously Commissioner Lang's getting the hang of this. But, uh, yeah, if you specifically address it to somebody, it's a lot easier for them to just, uh, respond without other people jumping in. So, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Lang, again, for staff. My next question is about the two-story building. I understand that upstairs, it's, I guess it's, it's restrooms on the ground floor and that they would have a, a office above. And is there a requirement that an office above be A D A accessible? I know it's just for staff, but I'm just thinking if there were future staff who needed A D A accessibility, is that a requirement that would come out if we approved them positional space?
This is Julietta with city planning. Typically, planning doesn't get into the weeds when it comes to the building code requirements, and that includes A D As. So whatever new construction is proposed, it would be required to comply with, you know, whatever building and safety requires.
Very good. Okay.
Um, Commissioner Lang again, sorry. Then, wait, where's the other one? Oh, no, sorry. That, that's all for now.
Very, very good. Okay, wonderful. Who'd like to go next? I see Commissioner Waltz Morocco there with their hand up, so, uh, let's turn it over to you.
By the way, Commissioner Waltz Morocco, uh, nice job, Commissioner Lang. Congratulations. Um, I just have a few questions for staff. Um, I just wanna review, make sure I've got this timeline right. In nineteen eighty-one, um, there was a specific, uh, condition listed that a loading zone must be present. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. In the.
In nineteen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In the Z A I, and this is Vindu with city planning.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Waltz Morocco again. So then in nineteen ninety-one, um, there was a change that required, uh, sixteen spaces at that time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you know what happened to the loading zone at that moment?
Uh, we don't, we did look through the permit history and there's no indication that the loading zone, uh, was provided in nineteen ninety-one.
So there wasn't, um, when they added the sixteen spaces, um, and it was approved, there wasn't anything written down anywhere or on a map when they approved it for this loading zone?
That's correct.
Okay. And so looking at the current layout now in your, in your, uh, research here, is there, um, a, a dedicated loading zone presently?
No, there is not.
Um. Can loading zones, here's a question I'm just curious about. I mean, we're, we're always so, um, Commissioner Waltz Morocco again, we're always so, uh, precious about space in this area. Um, can loading zones, must they be dedicated or can they be, uh, flexed between, uh, parking spaces at, at certain times?
I believe they do need to be dedicated per, uh, building and safety.
And just because I'm on this roll of loading zones, can loading zones ever be, um, off-site nearby? Like, for example, I know many times loading happens, I've seen it in Venice, where trucks pull into the center lane and jump out or do whatever they have to do. Um, I, I, I don't know. Is there ever, uh, any kind of approval of a loading zone that is nearby but off-site?
Not that I know of, for the provision that, um, for the L A M C code section that applies to this project because it's a commercial, uh, project that abuts a, an alley and a residential zone, the loading zone has to be on-site.
Has to be on-site. So then technically what you just said then is that currently the waterfront is non-compliant, um, because they don't have a loading zone.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and just quickly, um, kind of on the heels of that, I'm looking in conditions fifty-three and fifty-four. Are, are they new conditions? I don't think I've ever seen something written like that. And they're in regards to this idea of getting new ownership. And the idea of the new owner maybe or may not knowing what's in the minutia of, of approved conditions to operate in the past. Um, are they new? The fifty-four, you know, that basically say that a new owners must be made aware of any potential, um, you know, any conditions that were approved in the past and anything going forward, if there are substantial changes made, that the plan approval is required. So that's a, so I'm just saying, that's a new, I've just never seen that condition before. And it's, I welcome it. And, and I just wanna say I welcome it because there are so many cases in just my time on the, on a neighborhood council where a lot of the new operators just aren't aware of what, uh, a prior condition that was placed there. They just always assume something because that's how it's been, and in fact, they're not in compliance. Um, and then just lastly, I'll, I'll go quick because I know my commissioner, uh, fellow commissioners have other questions. The type forty-seven, um, requires food service, correct?
Yes.
That's Commissioner Waltz Morocco again. Um, is there a percentage of food service to the alcohol sales?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
There's not?
No.
Okay. And, um, so there's no, it does, so, so, so does that mean that food, so there's no percentage of sales to the type forty-seven? So you can have a bag of potato chips hanging up somewhere and as long as it's available, you're in compliant or?
No, they have to have a, a commercial kitchen. They have.
Mission, okay, okay. They have to have a commercial kitchen, but they don't have to be selling anything out of it. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, they have to have, uh, food service.
Right, but it's not based on any kind of percentage of sales?
No, no, not that I know of. That's, let me clarify that.
No, no, I, I, I completely appreciate it. I just heard many different stories about this and I always wanted to get the correct, uh, answer. I think that's all I have for now. I'll let others.
Commissioner Waltz Morocco, so just, just to jump in here, um, and we can have staff double-check this or perhaps a city attorney. But I am almost positive, uh, with all due respect to Vindu, that I believe food sales need to be fifty percent of the revenue on a forty-seven. Um, let's have staff check that in the background and make sure my recollection is correct. But I believe it's still fifty percent. Um, but let's, let's check, let's check into that just to make sure.
Okay, that is.
Commissioner Waltz Morocco, sorry to take the floor.
No, no, Commissioner Waltz Morocco, uh, thank you, Commissioner Newhouse for that. I, I thought that might be true, but then I wasn't sure. Um, I'm through for right now. I will let the rest of my fellow commissioners. Thank you very much, staff, for your questions.
Very good. So I've got Commissioner Yellen with a raised electronic hand and I have Commissioner Margulies with a raised real hand. So I will let both of you decide who gets priority.
I defer to Commissioner Yellen. Please ask.
Commissioner Young, the floor is yours.
What I don't understand is, uh, if they don't have a loading zone, what do they use as their loading zone? And when does loading happen? And how do we make sure that it doesn't interfere with all the traffic along Speedway? Because Speedway, I mean, it is very narrow. If you have a big truck, what happens if another big truck is behind that truck? What do you do? Uh, so I'm very concerned about the loading zone issue.
So this is, this has been due canon with city planning. Uh, what I believe the, the applicant or the, the restaurant owner does now is use the parking lot during off, off-peak hours, but I'm gonna go ahead and defer to the applicant team to elaborate on that.
Yes, Lorette, go, go ahead and let us know.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you very much. Commissioner Yellen and, and commissioners, that's the purpose of the zone variance request, which is to say that rather than, because we don't have a dedicated or would not have a dedicated loading zone, which would then have to be dedicated all the time. The plan is to have loading of commercial deliveries. There are no more than fifteen minutes at a time occur pre-business hours, which could be, say, nine-thirty in the morning or during off-peak, non-busy hours, just during the week. So this would just simply be able to accommodate that fifteen-minute interval that may occur a couple of times a week and be able to still then have this type of parking arrangement that we have on-site. We do have the room for it, um, and can do it. So, uh, we're, what's, that is a reason why we demonstrated why we're asking for the zone variance, um, for that purpose. Uh, may I make one other comment? And it is back to the, uh, off-site parking. It is a third of a mile away and actually, there is a code section that is a discussed, which is called remote off-site parking. And it is a part of a coastal policy. It is encouraged. It's in fact written in the, uh, uh, the L U P that we have where this is encouraged. They really want to see more people, more restaurants, more locations begin to recognize the value of moving vehicles and parking of vehicles away from the area of congestion. So in fact, the Whaler that was approved is fifteen hundred feet away. It's, it's just almost the same amount, uh, uh, and so I just wanted to make that re, that, that comment. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Waltz, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Yellen, anything additional before we move to Commissioner Margulies?
Oh, no, I'm.
See, very good. Commissioner Margulies.
Thank you, Commissioner Newhouse. This is Commissioner Margulies and thank you to my fellow commissioners for narrowing down my list of questions. Um, I, I actually would like to ask Juliette and Vindu. It, um, first to me that both our discretion in this case is looking at the C D P and, uh, takes us that, and I recently, uh, listened to it, the State Coastal Commission.
Commissioner Margulies. Commissioner, because I, I.
You hear me?
Uh, you're a little low. I'm just hoping you can, you can maybe up your volume a little bit. It was your first hearing.
All right, I'll screen more than one. Um, first to me, and we've been told on this commission that we do have discretion in this commission. And that there are things that we, in, in conditions we can apply and things we can require from the applicant that are not necessarily spelled out in the coastal plan and other codes that describe what's allowable. So I am curious from the planning staff, how much discretion do we have? Do we have, do you feel that we have to discretion to apply, uh, a, a condition-like temporary use of a loading zone in the parking on this site towards off-peak hours?
So I, I do want, this is Julietta with city planning. Um, I, I do want to, when it comes to loading, it's, it's specifically required in the code. And there, there is a reason why it's required to be provided on-site and it's a dedicated loading area because, you know, it's hard to sort of regulate when loading occurs for each business. Um, that being said, you, you know, the, the actions before you or the requested actions before you are for a coastal development permit and a specific plan exception, both of which the findings would discuss, um, loading and parking because both would affect access, uh, to the coast and to the site um, and, and the type of uses that are being proposed. So, you know, if, if there, if the commission does want to go the route of, um, modifying the type of, of loading that is provided for this project, staff is available to help you sort of, you know, make those findings. Um, but our recommendation is to require that loading be provided on-site and compliance with the code.
All right, this is Commissioner Margulies again. Let me ask you my follow-up question to this. If that is the case, and I believe what I saw, I believe I saw dimensions, required dimensions of ten feet in width of the length of the property as the required loading zone, that would, uh, that would remove one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten parking spaces currently provided on-site? Or more? Is that the intention of the planning department? Or I'm wondering, you know, sometimes an applicant comes and you give them some assistance in trying to work with them, uh, in legitimate ways to, to envision how a project can succeed. The point is, I'm curious, do you have a, given that so much of this project you approved or recommended approval of so much of the project with the exception of the loading zone and the off-site parking, do you have a scenario that you've discussed with the applicant or that you could discuss with us? A private site could work?
This is Julietta with city planning. So i- if you consider what the project is proposing, they're proposing new development on a vacant lot. And when we see new development on vacant lots, it's easier to, to sort of design circulation, um, with that. When it comes to the loading zone, you know, the applicant is proposing a lot of outdoor recreation and dining area to the front portion of the lot. And the, the new structure is proposed at the rear portion of the lot. So, you know, there could be flexibility there. Um, at the end of the day though, you know, we advise the applicant as to what the requirements are and we try to, you know, shape what the project could be. But, you know, it's, it's the applicant proposing the project. We don't necessarily redesign the project for the applicant.
This is Commissioner Margulies. I understand that, but let me ask you one last thing, not to beat this up too much, but if the applicant was to move their parking, if, if they were to move all of their improvements, including parking and the new restaurants and everything else they're showing, ten feet towards the beach, like create a ten-foot wide loading zone, would this project be acceptable? With the exception of the off-site parking?
Right, so are we, we're talking about the, the lot two, two thirteen Oceanfront Rock Walk, right? That, that parking area?
Would the, would the loading zone need to be, is it only one of the properties or is it all of the properties? I, I'm actually having a hard time understanding what your definition of that loading zone needs to look like on the plan.
So this is Julietta with city planning. So the, the project itself is, is the entire, all, all of the lots from two oh five to two thirteen Oceanfront Walk. The loading zone was first required for the original waterfront restaurant, which is the existing developed lots. Um, what the applicant is proposing is an expansion into that additional vacant lot. And so the loading zone on-site for this project is anywhere on, on those lots. So, you know, they could, they could choose to re-stripe the parking if they, if they wanted to. Or they could provide the loading zone on the, the vacant lot. Um, that seems to be a more practical approach, given that it is new construction. And so perhaps it could be redesigned to, um, accommodate the loading on-site there.
This is Commissioner Margulies. So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying they only need to provide a loading zone for one of the lots?
Right, it's one, this is one restaurant. So wherever they choose, i- i- it's one site.
Okay, all right. This is Commissioner Margulies. Uh, that's definitely very helpful and a different answer than I had imagined, which makes it sound much more clear. The follow-up question is about the parking. And you've told us, Juliette and Vindu, that they are, that you do not want to approve their off-site parking because it's more than the standard seven hundred fifty feet away from the project site. Um, Lorette, here, the applicant quoted to us a reference about encouragement of off-site parking in the, uh, if I understood correctly, in, in ver- in various L U Ps, maybe specifically in the Venice area. Is there, i- i- it, does, uh, does the city have a, feel that there's an appreciable, um, alternative for meeting the parking requirements for this project?
So, just, just to be clear, we're. So, just, just to be clear, we're basing our recommendation of the specific plan exception. Based on the findings, the required findings to, to grant a specific plan exception. So. When an applicant comes to us to say we'd like to increase an existing use, or we'd like to propose a new use. They're subject to these rules in this specific plan. So, y- you know, un- unless we can find that there is practical difficulty or hardship. Then we have no choice but to apply the same rule here for the, the required parking. So, you know, the applicant doesn't have to have additional service floor areas, that's a certain amount. They could reduce it. Um, again, it's, it's the applicant proposing this project, and we're saying the rules apply. And, and these are the findings, if you'd like to request a deviation from those rules.
Okay, uh, if Commissioner Margulies go ahead and finish, but when you're done, Commissioner Yellen, yes, I see your hand, so uh, you'll go right after Commissioner Margulies, Stan.
Uh, okay, this is Commissioner Margulies. I, um, I, I think that's good, I'm good for now. Thank you very much.
Great, Commissioner Yellen.
Commissioner Yellen, so, uh, my question is how much of the parking lot? Would, you, you know, they have all that area where they're gonna have seating, et cetera, et cetera. How much will that be reduced? If, and, and can it be reduced if they have their loading zone in that area? That's on the parking lot area. I see that they have. Uh, spaces for tables and I don't know what else is gonna go on there, but. Could it move forward and still create enough space for a loading zone? Juliette?
I think, this is Juliette with city planning. Um, I think it's the same, you know, question of, of who's designing this project. Is it the planning department, or is it the applicant? Um, you know, where the planning department is set, is, is subject to, you know, certain rules that we have to apply objectively. And the applicant, you know, either complies with those rules or they don't. Um, so it might be a good question if, if it's a question of, you know, can the applicant. Move the structure to provide the loading space on-site, that might be a question for the applicant team and their architect. To explain sort of the, the practicality of that.
So I pose the question to the applicant.
Okay, can I say something? My name, it's Jake Matthews speaking. Um, so, so the reason I guess we're, I'm confused is because, so we have this large parking field. And there's so much room for any loading or unloading all day long during the week. You know, we haven't even been opening until four o'clock, just because there's so little business during the week, you know, it's so quiet. So, we can easily schedule our delivery from, say, before noon, and just open up at noon during the week. And there's plenty of room in that parking lot, and I think, Liam, if you go all along Oceanfront Walk, no. Commercial businesses have the benefit that we have of having a huge parking field where they're loading to pull in and load. There's no loading zones, but we have all that space. So I guess what I'm confused about is, you know, it's such an amenity to the community to have all these bathrooms and to have a fun recreation area. That's what sort of draws people to this part of the boardwalk that I'm worried people aren't otherwise coming to. So, you know, just to, 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 to diminish the experience of having that space to be able to kind of hang out outside and have that free recreation. In order for, you know, loading, that I swear, I can, I can accommodate loading so easily. They come, they drop off. Sometimes they wanna come early, like at eight, nine, ten, eleven AM. We don't have customers then. And, and the chart we showed you all in twenty nineteen before COVID, we only had an average of eight point five cars all day until five thirty. So, you know, I'd rather, could you could just condition us on having to have our, you know, any deliveries or drop-offs happen, you know, before noon? Um, th- there's ample space for that, and we have so much more than anybody else uh, for those kinds of things.
If I may add to that, um, I, I think that really what we're looking at also is the benefit versus the. The community benefit, if you will, the benefits features here. That outdoor space, that.